And you're on.
Good evening. We've already opened the meeting before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session. Any members of the public who wish to attend the meeting may join the meeting and the link may be found on our website under school committee, notices and agendas for upcoming meetings, and it will be under tonight's school committee meeting date. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. And if anyone would like the exact wording for that, it may be found in our July 13, 2021 School Committee Packet. The school committee also reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practicable. We are live streaming and broadcasting on MCTV and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and our Gil-Montague Regional School District website. This would be the opportunity for public participation, which is policy BEDH. It's been reinstated to hold public participation remotely. No one has requested that this evening. In that case, we will move on and we'd like to welcome anyone who's in our Zoom audience. Just please remember, if you're a member of the audience only, to keep your camera and your mic turned off. Thank you so much. And important events, Brian.
Sorry, I kept myself muted for the first time in a little while. Just as a reminder, the first day of school for all students in grades one through 12 is this Thursday, August 26th, and we're very excited to be able to see the kids for get them rolling with a brief two-day week and then move into a a four-day week before a four-day weekend for students. The first day of school for preschool and kindergarten is Tuesday, August 31st. Last week, the pandemic response advisory committee reconvened and will continue to meet every other week. The next P-RAC meeting will be held on Wednesday, September 2nd from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. Just as a reminder that there'll be no school on Friday, September 3rd or Monday, September 6th, which is Labor Day. Students will have a four-day weekend around the Labor Day to get it so that everybody, you know, has an opportunity to dip in, build some community, and then get a little taste of summer and hopefully it won't be that humid. And then we'll come back with another four-day week and start at our school year. It also gives us a little bit longer holiday vacation later on down the road and allows us right now to be scheduled to end on June 29th. So I'm very excited about starting this early. I think it would be better in particular if we have a harsh winter. Wednesday, September 15th is going to be Student Photo Day for the middle school and high school, and Principal Barnes will send out, has sent that information out to parents, but we'll be sending it out as it gets closer. Thursday, September 16th will be open house for both the high school and middle school. And they've staggered the times so that the middle school will hold its open house from 5:00 to 6:30, and the high school will hold its open house from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. to just stretch out the, minimize the number of people that who are in the building at any one time. And that's it for events.
Okay, if you'd like to continue, you could give the rest of your report since we don't have any student reps yet. Hopefully
Sure.
year's underway, we can check in with the students and see if we can have a rep or two.
Sure, I have a very brief summary report this time as we we have some handbook review to do, and also I'm going to take the time with Melissa Bednarski to go through our our district COVID safety plans to start off the school year. The CDC hasn't changed Franklin County out of the risk category of substantial. At the same time, we haven't climbed into high, but cases in the area are climbing. The only town of the 11 towns that we monitored that does not have at least one case is Warwick. Greenfield is up to 25, Orange up to 23, and Montague is up to 13 statewide. We were at about 9,000 in the last two-week period. Over the the current two-week period, we've had nearly 15,000 cases. So every two weeks in the state of Massachusetts, the the case trend seems to double every almost double every 14 days. So we want to make sure that we're, as we're coming back to school, that we're taking every precaution that we can. There's only one minor change in the amount of in the in the vaccination rates that individuals in Franklin County with at least at least one dose as of August 17th increased from 68 to 69%. I will review with Melissa Bednarski the safety plans for the opening of school. And just to brief facilities updates, the floor project at Gill Elementary was completed on August 18th, and all rooms are able to be occupied. The facilities and instructional staff have been working to rearrange furniture and materials in preparation to receive students. And at Hillcrest Elementary, Sarah Burstein walked me through the carpet installation has been completed in in the room that had fractured tiles, and it looks great. So we're pleased and ready to get the those buildings going. The Sheffield Playground, the estimated delivery date of the materials for the repairs to the playground remains September 8th, and we'll keep the committee posted as well as parents posted on the repairs to the playground. And that's it for the summary report for this meeting.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone have any questions for Brian about that information? Okay, thank you. Joeyanne, is there anything that you have for us this evening? I don't think, I think you said you didn't have anything.
Right. I don't have a report, but I do want to share that I'll be meeting with the Montague Capital Committee tomorrow to review our capital plans and to take a look at the Hillcrest floor. So our hope is that we can get finances, you know, the money money allocated sooner rather than later to maybe start looking at replacing some of those floors next summer over at Hillcrest. When we waited for the Gill Town Meeting to approve the funding for the Gill floors to be redone, you know, it was really a tight process to get that bid out and to get that scheduled over the summer. So I spoke to Steve Ellis about trying to get this on an earlier agenda, like, you know, a special town meeting in the fall or in the winter, so that way we could bid this out over the winter and have it scheduled in a more timely manner. I'd rather not spend my next vacation putting a bid out, so.
Good point. Thank you.
That's tomorrow.
Okay, very good. All right. In that case, moving along, School Committee reports, the warrant subcommittee, which is me at the moment, needs a vote to approve the signing of the AP warrant, which is accounts payable to pay the bills. The warrant is number 3204. It's dated 8/25/2021 in the amount of $86,941.27. And everyone on School Committee received an email with all the information about the warrant. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Thank you.
Cassie second.
And Cassie second. And we will need to do a roll call with votes. So Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. And moving on to the business portion of the meeting. We need to review and vote to approve the school handbook updates, and I can tell by the size of the packet that we received. I know all the principals have been working really hard on their handbook updates. And I believe are all set to walk us through them, correct, Brian?
Yeah, and so the elementary, all three of the elementary handbooks, the presentation is going to be done by Melissa Petrop from Sheffield. So I wanted to invite Melissa. So there she is.
Hi.
And Tina, I think, is going to share Melissa's PowerPoint or slideshow, which has the a summary of the changes made in in the elementary handbooks.
Great.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you. So one of next slide, please. All right. So one of the first things that we had done in the spring of last year, we were provided by Diane Ellis that we needed to update. Our school handbooks were not compliant with some of the discipline procedures. We, even though we had information about our calm-down rooms and suspensions and information in that way, we did not have enough of the due process. So all of our handbooks are now updated. We provided this information at a spring, actually a June staff meeting, but we made sure that we replaced all of the new guidelines by the recommended by the lawyer in each of our handbooks. Next slide, please. Um, the other thing that we began doing is really being mindful of the fact that, you know, as we're thinking about having our school use smarty goals and being inclusive and equitable, we also felt like our handbook needed to be the same. So what we made a conscious effort of removing the he, she pronouns in our handbooks and replacing them with either the words students, children, or them, or they. So we have removed all of those and put those back in. Next slide. There were some changes to our arrival and dismissal routines due to COVID. So part of what we had done previously last year was amend the times that we were allowing students both on campus as well as where students entered our buildings and then exited our buildings. So those have been replaced in our handbooks again to ensure that families know how to and where to go to drop their children off and where their children will be dismissed. Unfortunately, both Sheffield and Gill also needed to include language around vaping. I had a couple of issues with that this past school year, and I took the language right out of the school committee off of the school committee information on the website around vaping and smoking on campus, and I cut and pasted that and put that in there. The cell phone policy use one was very much a collaborative effort of our school councils, both Gill and Sheffield addressed this with their school councils, and we wanted to make it in the in the beginning, it said no cell phones at all, but we felt that was really unrealistic. More and more students are coming in as they're either walking, just, you know, walking back and forth, or they're going home and their families are working and they need to be contacted because they no longer have a landline. So we basically kind of set in some procedures that were more user-friendly, both sharing with families that we were not taking responsibility for the cell phone itself, but yet we were giving children an opportunity to keep them on their person unless it became a distraction. So some of the Hillcrest, you can go, you can go back to the Hillcrest one. So this is just basically kind of some specific changes to Hillcrest, and a lot of it's just new staffing. So Sarah hired a new first-grade teacher, Sarah Johnson. The cool thing was she had applied to Sheffield first, and we had hired somebody, so I'm like recommended her, which was awesome. Jasmine Smith will be the new speech-language pathologist. Cassie Mallett will be a new paraprofessional. Mandy Skiff was a former paraprofessional here at Sheffield, but she really missed a little, so she's back. She's now over at Sheffield Hillcrest. Nisi Yassel is now a paraprofessional there as well. Nicole Wudren is a paraprofessional, and she's still awaiting a nurse and a custodian. Those are both posted, but have not been filled. For Sheffield, we have Kylie Angel. She's now a new full-time, five-day-week school counselor. Paul Ross replaces Kevin White as a full-time school counselor. Alex Serone is now our second-grade teacher. Charlotte Demers is now going to join our Room One staff. I also still need a paraprofessional in Room One. Jordan Charbonneau is now going to be a prepare, can't speak, sorry, a pair of supporting grades four and five, taking Mandy Skiff's position. And I am still in need of three paraprofessionals to support our therapeutic program. And finally, Gill. Sanhui May is a parent who has been a great, amazing substitute. I'm sad to hear that she's now going to be a paraprofessional, but good for her, supporting grades five and six at Gill. Faith Rand, supporting grades two and four. And still, we have some paras needing to be hired there as well. And also Catherine Provost was a part-time counselor here at Sheffield. She served three days a week with us. Then she was two days a week at Gill because of COVID and the need to support our students' social and emotional growth and learning. Catherine is now a full-time counselor over at Gill. Hence, my need for a replacement, which is why we have Kylie on board. Are there any questions? Any particular questions for Melissa about any of the elementary handbooks?
Thank you very much, Melissa.
And I think it's really helpful that the schools all work together on their handbooks because I think that consistency must make it so much easier for parents, especially if they're going from Hillcrest to Sheffield. They're familiar with the form, the way it works. It just makes everything so much clearer and, you know, and I know the team of principals works well together. So I think that's a great, a great thing to do. Yes, we feel it's extremely important, and it is a lot of fun to just sit, well, not to say sit around all summer, but we do spend quite a bit of time collaborating to ensure that we are as similar as we can be with our language and the guidelines that we put forth for families. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, and everyone has the complete handbook for each of the elementary schools that was sent out in the email. If anyone wants an actual paper copy, they're welcome to request one from Sabrina. And Brian, do we have someone who is going to walk us through? I'm thinking Christopher, perhaps?
Yep, Christopher Barnes, the high school, middle school principal, is going to walk us through the changes to the high school, middle school handbook.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. I I didn't include staff changes, so I apologize for that. But Joey and I, being new, just really tried to focus on a few things, and those things were our response to student behaviors and how we work with students to support their behaviors in the classroom and around the building. I think that Tina, you're sharing the screen with me, and then I'm going to put up my PowerPoint. Is that right?
Yeah, so just make sure that your PowerPoint is on, and then on the lower part of your screen on the bar, you'll see a green share screen button, and you can go ahead and click on that one. Awesome.
Can everybody see it?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then you can put it on presentation mode, and you can go ahead.
Yes, that's for me. I'm not seeing anybody right now.
There you go.
We okay?
Thank you.
Tina or Brian, if you could text me if we're okay, because I
Yeah, Chris is grateful. Can you hear us?
It's good, Chris. We can see it.
Yep, we can see, we can see, and we can see you up in the right-hand corner, and then across the screen is your slideshow, so you're good.
Okay, all right, thank you. So as I said, we just had a few areas for change. We inserted language around multi-tiered systems to support. That's what MTSS stands for. And what that means is that we work with students in the classroom, identify what they need as supports, and it's various supports going. There's three different levels. The first support is in the classroom. Second support is also likely in the classroom, but a more intensive, maybe a reading group support. And then the third support would be the highest tier, and that would be for very few few students who really need some more intensive kind of supports, be it a pull-out or that, they're using, implementing that this year, reduction, reduction of
Christopher, if I could ask, I'm going to ask you to shut off your video because it may help with the audio is just a little bit scattered. So you can continue to share your screen, but if if you just click over the video, it will, it will cut out your picture. We'll see if that works because you just got a little bit skippy before you went to the next slide.
Yeah.
So try, try the screen share again and then or before the screen share, if you can just down the bottom, turn your video off. There you go. Now try the screen share, and we'll see if the audio works better.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, great. So the multi-tiered systems of support will have a team comprised of educators, of behavior interventionists, admin, a broad array of maybe six to eight people who will help us focus our efforts for the MTSS. What we're going to do also is we're going to be looking at what we're doing in classrooms and how we can respond with better instruction, how we respond to behavior. These are the kinds of things that an MTSS group begins to focus on at a tier-one level. The great news is that we're also going to be doing that work through the through the framework, pardon me, the roadmap that Desi has provided. So these things are really going to dovetail. It's going to work out well. We reduced the behavior levels. There were four behavioral levels previously. Now we only have three. It wasn't much of a change at all. Third and fourth levels were really the most serious infractions, and both had, you know, the most serious consequences associated with them, be it in-school or out-of-school suspension or other other consequences. By reducing those, we just simplified it a little bit. There was, there was really no impact at all on students, families, or teachers. And so there's two places that that was reduced in the explanation, and then also in, there's a, there's a several-page table where there used to be four columns, and now there's only three. So it's really, like I said, we just collapsed the third and fourth column. And that's where the changes can be found. I mentioned the behavior violation table, which begins on page 48. The other thing that we did was, there was already language within the handbook, and I'm referring to the Turner Falls High School handbook currently. There was language in there on restorative practices, but what we did was we broadened that. We broadened the language around it to also include how we're responding to student behavior. So what we, what we did was, we took restorative language, and we included that across the different types of behavior. So the focus there is to, rather than respond punitively with behavior, to come up with ideas around how we can have the student be involved in restoring the impact that they've had on the community with their behavior. It's more of a teaching approach, more of a positive focus for the students. I don't know if you can hear my dog barking behind me, but I apologize for that. There's nothing to do. My wife's not home, so I'm going to keep going. But that's a restorative practice. Brian, pardon me, well, Brian is very invested in that, but Joey and I are as well. And we're really going to be working to define what those kinds of things are. Right now, we got the language in there. We broaden the language according to the different kinds of behaviors, but the kinds of things that we're going to be putting in place for students to do whenever they have those behaviors is going to be worked on throughout the year. And here's where those changes can be found. And we really did much of the same for the Great Falls Middle School Handbook. We included the MTSS tiered supports and the focus on restorative practices. I absolutely really believe in teaching kids, so we're going to do the best that we can to take these opportunities with students, to teach them and have them involved in change, rather than just responding with consequences. Of course, that's, that's, it's still going to be in place to some degree, but we're really going to try and shift away from that. That's really all I had. Pretty simple. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead. Yep. Jennifer?
Sorry, I'm working on the mute. I confess that I have not read cover, cover these, these handbooks, so maybe my question was already addressed. And I like the idea that there's movement away from punitive by introducing this restorative approach, but it still seems very reactionary and responsive. And I'm wondering, does the school system take any proactive approaches toward shifting the culture?
That would be where we're doing the MTSS. So MTSS really sorry. MTSS responds to behavior and academics. And so the dispositional response that we have with behavior through an MTSS model is one where we're responding to behaviors with the way that, for example, in a classroom, if a student is displaying a certain behavior rather than saying, okay, it's time for you to go, we're trying to respond to the behavior, to the behavior in a, in a more gentle way, in a more, a less reactionary way to keep the student in the classroom. The specifics, I'm having trouble with some specifics around that right now. But these are the things that we're going to be working on with the team. So for example, what we'll do perhaps in meetings some places, we'll share approaches. What do you do when students does X, Y, or Z within your classroom? And we'll share approaches so that we can broaden everybody's toolbox of how we can respond to behaviors, keep kids in class, have them learn about themselves, as well as create those stronger relationships with teachers. So that's, that's one way that we're responding for sure, and and I hope it has a good impact.
Yeah, and Jennifer, Jennifer, if I could add a little bit into that too, that one of the, one of the key elements in in terms of, as you mentioned, the handbook is intended to primarily lay out like a quasi-legal set of circumstances so that students have an understanding and and parents have an understanding that when this happens, that this would be, this is a consequence. So we sort of, it's our opportunity to teach children about how laws work in society. And it's, it is effectively a quasi-legal document. In order to take particular type of actions, we have to have it delineated to a response when when there's a violation. However, one of the, one of the ideas is to provide the principal with the authority to take offenses that might result in suspension from school and put in place school or community service or academic time in place of suspension for appropriate sets of circumstances and providing the student the opportunity by doing that to undo or repair the harm that's done. On the instructional side, you know, in terms of of preparing students to have an understanding, we start off with the, at the high school, they've already planned the all-school meetings, you know, to review what the goals are, what the objectives are for the year, to lay out how we want children to treat one another, how we want them to interact with their content, getting them excited about the school year. I've had the chance to hear from Christopher and Joey about what they're going to do to start off the school year in those meetings. And then there's a strong group of staff members who work with the administration to do regular advisory meetings and ongoing all-school meetings and grade-level meetings during the school year so that there's constant dialogue about, you know, trying to trying to continue to build the the culture, build the climate, how to care for one another. And so it's really those programs that have a specific curriculum that can be really developed in response to outside or internal circumstances that provide the other side of the equation. And there are many teachers certainly that take the time to build an environment in their own classroom by giving student voices. So really, on the proactive end, this particular school has a lot of, a lot of elements that can contribute to the proactive instruction so that students aren't put in a situation where they're crossing the line. In addition to the fact that we're adding in a group of trained active bystanders who are going to be delivering that curriculum to every middle school student so that every student in the school will be educated on the impact of harm and how to intervene when you see it happening.
And are those very specific approaches documented somewhere where I and/or the public can read them?
Go ahead, Brian.
No, I was going to say, not necessarily. It's, it, it's something, you know, we've, obviously, we share this stuff at School Committee. We share it in professional development. And it's probably something that we should, over the course of this year, as we're seeking to change the culture and the climate with a new team, or continue the process of doing so, to put that together, to share with parents as we try to invite them to be active partners in in helping us to make those changes. So I will take, yep.
Sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Just one more thing. The bystander intervention, I've seen that work at a couple of different levels. And I'm wondering, do you also plan to implement some sort of positive mirroring? So positive mirroring? So on the one hand, you know, if some, if an event happens, then someone knows how to step in in a successful and way to sort of de-escalate, de-escalate into few things, but also are there participants on a similar level that are trying to represent positive actions that can be mirrored sort of in advance of the situation?
Well, I mean, right now, the only, the only, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be, again, using the MTSS team, part of that, part of the, part of the directive for the team is to also be providing, I'm going to use a strong word for something that's not as strong in what I want to describe, a curriculum. Ultimately, that's where we're going to be getting to, to be providing either something that, that we can access or our own sort of short curriculum for social, emotional work to be done through an advisory time, through a gap time, something like that. So that's a common practice. We're, we're, we don't even have our team together yet. But this is, this is trajectory for us. And so then, but, but your points are well taken. And, and these are things to make sure that the community is aware of, that we, that we publish, that we, that we let folks know and also potentially include in the handbook.
Thank you for fielding my questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Cassie, did I see your hand up?
No, I just was going to piggyback on what Chris and Brian said. I guess, you know, for me, tiered support is something I'm very familiar with, but I think to an outsider, Jennifer was, was correct that some of the wording in the handbook can sound sort of punitive. But I, I was just kind of going to support them with an example of, like, the tiered supports are put in place so that that punitive action never needs to occur. So I think it's, it's the things that you see before that. So
Right.
Yeah, that was, that was
So, yeah, and thank you. Thank you for that, Cassie. It's, when I was talking about tier one, again, those are, those are supports, those are reactions that we have within a classroom. That's how we conduct ourselves within a classroom. So the end goal there is to not have as many kids with these behaviors, to teach them within the classroom and to respond appropriately to support them.
Anyone else have any questions for Christopher?
Thank you very much, Christopher.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot. Okay. And again, we all have copies of those and certainly if other questions come up, you know, you're more than welcome to let Brian know if there's some particular areas. You know, they're pretty lengthy volumes. A lot of it is just basic information for families. But if anything comes up that you're wondering more about, please don't hesitate to ask. We need then to vote to approve the school handbooks. I will entertain a motion to approve all of them together. I believe that would be the most effective.
I'm moved.
Mike, thank you. Second.
Seconded.
Joanna, thank you. Any other questions or comments before we vote it?
Um, I haven't read all of the details in a way that I understand them. Is, I mean, it feels like that would be important to approving something. Has everyone else already read cover to cover and like agrees with it? Is that, because maybe I should just abstain till I?
Mike, did you have a comment on that?
Sorry. Just that over the years, I've been able to read them cover to cover a couple of times. Yes. So, and, so yes, this is all stuff that goes over, has been gone over each year. There have been times when there
Oh, you hit the mute again, Mike.
There, there have been times of substantial changes with discussed with the, having them uniform so that they're not like in different languages and different idioms from, from one school to the next. So to read a little bit into your question, yes, they, they have been reviewed completely by some of us who had the opportunity to do that at some point. But it is, it's quite a lot to do over a three-day weekend to try and read them all. But yes, they have been, just to say that they have been read through.
Brian?
I was going to add that in the course of the tier focused monitoring that Diane gave, all of the handbooks were reviewed cover to cover by our, by our schools attorneys. And they made recommendations for changes. So that was done during the school year last year. At the same time, I asked the principals, what they, what's presented in the slides is a summary of the updates that they've made to the handbooks. And those are really the only things that need to be voted on are just the handbooks as updated. Because the remainder of the language stays the same and is is again reviewed and approved by our attorneys annually.
Diane, did you have another comment as well? You're muted.
There we go. I'm out of practice with my trigger finger, finger here in the mute button. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what Brian had just said. We did do our tier focused monitoring last year. And there are legal statutes and references that are required in public school handbooks relative to students with disabilities, to bullying prevention, to Title Civil Rights Protections, Title I notification. So the attorney who has a different lens on all those requirements than all of us gave his review and approval, which was important and was accepted by Desi when they finalized our tiered focus monitoring report. So we were in compliance, our handbooks with the changes that were made were considered compliant with what the State Department of Education looks for.
Anyone else? It is a lot for someone new to read all at once for sure. And ordinarily, we don't necessarily approve of all of them at once, but I think COVID made some of the timelines with things really different with what had to be dealt with. Though I think we were feeling that since the administrators were going through it and reviewing it all together, that we would try to at least get to that point as quickly as we could for the school year. But I can understand why it would make a lot more sense next time to have them available much earlier. I think that is a great suggestion. Cassie?
We need to approve them tonight, or would it be something we could move? I know we, we're starting school next week.
That's what it would be something. Brian, Joanna, have them approved?
Yeah. I mean, it would be ideal to have them approved tonight because again, you know, I'm thinking about we have a kid who shows up on the third day of school or on September 12th or even the 13th before the next school committee meeting that, you know, shows up to Sheffield with a nicotine product. They need to be, they need to be authorized to be able to act on that and, you know, take action with families.
And I guess I don't necessarily think of approving the handbooks as saying that we agree with everything that's in them. Word for word. I think it's more of saying, yes, we recognize they have to have them and they have done their due diligence to come up with something that's appropriate, I guess, is the way I look at it. But I also have read them nauseam over the last 11 years. So not a lot is surprising, but I can understand that. So I think if we could possibly vote them tonight, that would be fine. If somebody doesn't feel comfortable, that's okay not to vote them. That's not, never a problem to vote what you wish. Anyone else? Okay, Mike made the motion. Joanna seconded it. All those in favor, we need a roll call whenever we vote. And people, please remind me if I forget, that's a change that's just happened fairly recently and I have a habit of forgetting it. Jennifer?
I'm going to abstain from this.
Okay, Cassie? Heather? Oh, I think Heather had to leave temporarily. Mike?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
And myself? Yes.
And that's not a, that's not a quorum though.
I think we do have, all we need is four, one, I mean, five, one, two, three, four, five.
Okay, even though Jennifer's abstaining?
We have a quorum for the work.
Okay.
We have to have a unanimous vote. Am I correct? Is that correct? Mike, you're the expert on, you're longer than
You need a majority of the quorum.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's the way I understood it, but I like to double check because those sorts of things are not my specialty, but thank you, Cassie. We may
Never seen this before, that's why.
Well, and I know I've never had, I was a little, I needed to make sure we had a quorum tonight, right? Things have changed and we do. Thank you so much. So it has passed. Okay, next item, discussion about addressing pandemic learning loss. I think that would be Brian again.
Yeah, and I'm going to start this off and, and I'm going to move it along. And again, it's somewhat brief, but I'm very excited about some of the things that the high school administration, the elementary principals and Director of Teaching and Learning, Jean, Jean Powers. I'm going to pass it to Jean shortly. I just want to start off with what we've sought to do at the high school, middle school level. Recognizing that our instructional staff needs support in implementing certain elements of the acceleration roadmap and, and understanding the idea of providing scaffolding for instruction that we've contracted with a consultant, somebody who is effectively a retired director of pupil services. Patricia Bell had been a longtime special education chair in the Frontier Regional School District and then served combined for more than a decade as a, as a pupil services director at Mohawk Trail and in the town of Hadley. She has a great deal of expertise in universal, universal design for learning. And basically, we're providing her as a support for all secondary teachers to help them navigate and develop the instructional tools that are available through the DESI acceleration roadmap and those resources and help apply them to their content area and to students to help, help teachers be able to better scaffold instruction for students so that students can access grade level learning. She'll also be providing consult on helping teachers to more efficiently and effectively adapt accommodations and modifications for students who are on learning plans, 504s and IEPs, as well as advise on the referrals and information provided to student support teams. And we're very excited that, you know, I feel badly that I was looking for an interim superintendency, which she had done very recently, and we're glad that she did not choose that and chose to work with us instead. Because it gives us an incredible resource. And Jean and Pat Bell, Christopher and Joey have also, have already had a couple of meetings and Pat has already been introduced to the high school, middle school staff on the opening days. And is already rolling in, in gathering information to see what teachers need to become more facile with the supports that are inherent in the roadmap. And I, I wasn't in on these discussions, but Jean, do you want to talk to us a little bit about what else is going on at the secondary level?
Yeah, definitely. So some of the other things we've been working on with Pat, and Christopher's mentioned them a little bit, is the MTSS work. So looking at providing support for teachers and understanding how to provide tier one support for academics, which is kind of across the board, and then tier two, which would be inter, giving interventions. We're working on looking at assessment and common assessment. Pat Bell's going to be working on looking at common assessments for departments at the secondary level, specifically in the high school. And we're also, Christopher has already mentioned this, but establishing an MTSS team that will take on some of this work and Pat will be involved with that as well. So to kind of, to piggyback a little bit more too, on some other things that we're doing at the secondary level, specific to pandemic learning loss, we're going to be contracting with iReady, which the elementary school has been using. iReady will allow for a diagnostic assessment for students grade six through 12 in math and reading. And that will let us get a sense of where students are. So not only just in general math and reading where students are, but specifically for our middle school students in grade six through eight. Any students in that grade, we're going to be working with the teachers and providing some professional development on really how to use the data. But beyond the data, they have an instructional platform, a digital instructional platform. Again, the elementary school's been using this. So to provide some continuity, we'll be providing that access to teachers so they can do some digital intervention with math and reading for our middle school students. Basically, the diagnostic will tell the teachers where students need to work within, within that system, the iReady program. So we're just getting that off, launched. And so we're going to be hopefully doing some assessments in late September, early October to get this underway. So that's really the secondary level.
Then at the, yeah, at the elementary level, both the Witten Wisdom English Language Arts curriculum, as well as the Bridges Math curriculum, have some built-in components that provide some scaffolds as well as some, some responses to deficient, some deficiencies that students might have. But Jean is probably better prepared to actually be able to speak to those as well.
Sure. So at the elementary level for math, the Bridges curriculum, that the teachers have been using for a few years now, really about a year and a half, but they have built-in pre and post-assessments within the curriculum. They have a focus on number corners, which allows for a short amount of time of focusing in on skills and fluency related to the use of numbers. And then within lessons, there's a number of scaffolding tools such as graphic organizers, visuals, prompts for teachers to use, burn and talks. So there's a lot of scaffolding built into the math curriculum for the elementary level. As well as the Witten Wisdom, which our teachers just had their first, well, they had a kind of a preview training in the spring, but kind of down to the lesson level this past Monday on the Witten Wisdom training. And within that, those lessons, there are checks for understanding. After every unit, there's a pause point. So it's really a chance for, for teachers to pause before they move on. And then it's a layered curriculum, so a lot of the content comes back. And that really specifically in, in reading, we're also working with Witten Wisdom with their Geodes curriculum, which is going to be new to us and we're going to kind of pick that up in a couple of weeks. But that really helps with developing and struggling readers and it connects really closely with foundations, which is the phonics program. So there's a lot of alignment and a lot of layers built in for not only just the reading, writing, listening, speaking, but the phonics component as well. So you know, obviously, we're going to work with teachers at the elementary level and the, the secondary level to continue to build their expertise in scaffolding. But a lot of the things that we have and the things that we're bringing in do have a lot of support for really assessing where students are and providing them what they need at the time.
Thank you, Jean.
Anything else, Brian, you'd like to add to that?
No, I just wanted to say thank you to Jean. She started on August 3rd and as you'll see in the next agenda item, that she's really not only hit the ground running, but filled a lot of gaps that existed in the absence of having a Director of Teaching and Learning. And I'm very impressed with the connections that she's made with our administrative team. And I'm, I'm excited to to have her speak to the next topic, which is issues of equity. The only thing that I wanted to add, and I'll hand the rest of it off to Jean. The Training Active Bystanders Program will be training high school students on October 12th, 19th, and the 21st, which I've mentioned in, at previous meetings. But Quabbin Mediation is also arranged for the training of our 20 middle school teachers on the 20th. So within the same two-week chunk of time, the students and the teachers will receive the training on the language. And Jean had responded, had looked into the surveys that were put together and began to engage in dialogue with the principals around what has happened over the last couple of years in, in buildings and what it was that they were looking for in terms of equity training for teachers. And Jean, I'll let you speak to what you've arranged at this point at the middle school and what the plans are for the high school going forward.
Really? So Monday, Joey and Christopher had put together a presentation for the staff to gather some feedback on what the staff has been working on for the past few years on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we did a number of survey questions and we kind of, we saw them all. They were up on the boards. We kind of got to see what people's responses were, but as a team, we haven't dug We kind of got to see what people's responses were, but as a team, we haven't dug into exactly what all the responses were and what people are still looking for. So that's some of the work that we need to do. But the, the questions really allowed us to get a sense of what, what we need to kind of focus in on for this work moving forward. So as Brian said, the active bystander training to the middle school team will be trained in the language used. So when the high school students come in and train the middle school students, there's a nice cohesive alignment there. So we'll be looking to determine based on that data from the survey, what the high school team can be working on, on October 20th for diversity, equity, inclusion. And we have a couple of ideas, but again, we want to dig into the data. We want to make sure that we're responding to what the teachers are asking for. And then we're going to have two days, two early release days in the spring where we're going to focus on diversity, equity, inclusion at the secondary level. And we're still brainstorming some ideas. Again, want to use the data. I have a consultant that I've worked with previously, who's worked to bring not only support for educators, but support for students on using language, anti-racist language, thinking about microaggressions, anti-bias. So there's, there's a lot of different ideas that we can go for. So we're going to be talking about that probably later this week, next week or the coming weeks with myself, Joey, Christopher and Pat Bell, about what, what the kind of next steps are for the secondary level. So that's in plan. And then to transition to the elementary, again, we want to focus in on what this, the teachers need. And the principals had gotten some feedback from teachers in the spring about giving some more kind of foundational work, getting some more confidence in being able to talk about racial issues as well as equity and inclusion within their classes. You know, a lot of times books are used, picture books or short chapter books are used. And so just giving more confidence to the teachers. So I've reached out and we're going to be working with the Collaborative for Educational Services out of Northampton. They have a series that they do, it's called Brave Elementary Educators Talk About Race. And it's going to be a three-part series. So we'll have one in October, one in December and one in March, where they'll be getting the, it'll be all elementary staff and they'll be doing some thinking and talking and learning about kind of what are the, what are the ways to provide some confidence and foundations for teachers and other staff members to be able to have these conversations. And there'll be a lot of reflection and in practice as well. So that's where we are for the plan for the elementary school for the year.
Thank you very much, Jean.
Yes, thank you for joining us this evening and welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Jean? Jennifer?
Hi. You were talking about the diversity, equity and inclusion at the secondary level, level interviewing teachers or, or sorry, surveying teachers. And did you say that some students were involved in that process as well? Or was it just finding out what the teachers need?
It was just finding out what the teachers need at this point. So we had our first professional development day on Monday where we had all the staff and with Christopher, Joey and myself being new to the district and knowing that there had been a lot of work that had already happened, we wanted to get a sense of what's happened, but also what else do people still feel like they want or need to explore. So we did a series, Joey put together questions, we did a series of like six or seven questions that, you know, what, you know, what words come to mind when you think about, you know, anti-bias work? And then like what, what are some of the focus areas that occurred when you did training last year? And so we got a sense of what the teachers have done. And then we asked questions like, what do you still want to grow? Like what are some places you feel like you still want to work? And the three major things, again, I was watching them as they were kind of going through on the, on the board, because it was a digital response, was more conversation about language use, more conversations about microaggressions and more anti-bias work. That was kind of the major three themes that came out of those questions. And again, we want to dig into it a little bit more and exactly see what everyone wrote and what kind of comes more to the surface. And then, you know, we're going to figure out what that looks like for our high school staff in October, because the middle school staff will be doing their work with the anti-training active bystanders. And then we'll have two, two half-days in the spring and we're going to do, kind of looking to do like a mini-series. And again, I want to talk with the, the team a little bit more about that and build off of some of the questions and concerns that have come up from the staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. And I'm sure we'll get updates as the year goes on. That'll be very helpful.
Definitely.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. Next item under business is update and possible vote on the fall COVID safety guidance. We have policy EBC.
Oh, sorry. I don't mean to cut you off. Or I didn't realize we had transitioned to issues of equity. Can I, can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
So I just wanted to mention, and I, I asked Jean to put this under issues of equity. I wanted to put out an apology to anyone I may have offended with my school choice dialogue at the meeting last week. I received a couple of emails and, you know, equity is a big issue for me. And I recognize that families will always make the decision that's best for them and their children. And so my distaste or frustration was not meant to target families that make that choice. It was more so about the program and how it exists. So I, after receiving those emails, which I responded to personally, I just wanted to put it out there. We all come to this table with our own biases and opinions. We're nine people coming from different places and I would never want to push my opinion onto anybody else. I think it's important that we all have different biases and opinions, because that's how a good school committee works together. You know, you may change my mind, that's sort of how it works. And we bring those and we make the important decisions. So I just felt it was important, you know, my, my opinion is my own and I recognize that. And I will, I also recognize I can be very loud. I won't say abrasive, but you know, I can, I can, I can be very loud when I feel strongly about something. And I just want to make sure that I put it out there to anyone that I did offend with that, that, you know, it was not meant to be an attack on any personal choices families are making, but rather the, the entire system. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Mike?
Thank you. I was going to ask a question about microaggressions, but I'm not gonna, because I don't want to get into what the questions were from staff. That's not really our business here. But it is something that was discussed or there were attempts to discuss that and other concepts related to equity in the mainstream, let's say, while we had, we're trying to develop an equities, an equity committee. And, and I'm sorry, I'm processing this at the same time. What I really want to say is that I hope that there will be some sort of in-touch group. This was made up of parents and administrators and school committee members and students, et cetera, et cetera, to, to, to be kept aware of the thinking that's being adopted by the district, just to make sure that it's, that it meets our needs and has been vetted properly, et cetera, et cetera. But not something that should happen in the school committee meetings. This is way too in-depth and that would be messy. But some sort of side group that is in touch with all the developments that are going on, because I have real concerns about the, about that particular concept. I don't have any concerns with protecting people. Let me get that clear. But so, and, and these were as a result of the work we did together as, as an equity committee. So it can, you know, I, I'm concerned that we not get, yeah, I'm just concerned that we're all in the same place and that we all agree we're going in the right direction. That's what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder, Mike, because I know we have mentioned at other times that we should see what we can do about perhaps starting some sort of, whether it's a task force or it wouldn't be necessarily a subcommittee of this committee only. It would want, I, the way I understood it, it would need to be much broader in membership. And Brian, did you have something to say about that?
Yeah, I was hopeful that, you know, because we have a very strong and active student council at the high school that is actually involved at the state level. And even though we were in the midst of the pandemic, even in the prior year, the, the state organization had done an enormous amount of work around issues of bias and discrimination and, and protecting and now adding trained students. Part of what, and I think Jennifer may have alluded to this a little bit in one of her questions, but part of what I'm looking to do with the high school administration and bringing in the active bystanders is having that group of trained students also perhaps work with student council to take the lead on, you know, they're the ones who are existing in the building on a day-to-day basis. They're the ones who are hearing what's happening under. They're the ones, they're the ones who have to be trained to be able to get those behaviors to stop, how to report them to people when necessary, how to talk to their parents about it so that it makes it to us if we don't hear it. It's happening underneath the radar. So I'm hopeful that by the time we hit the end of October, that we have a group of students who are willing to come forward to the committee late October, early November and make a recommendation for what, you know, what we might do as a school community with some student leadership at the core of that.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Sorry. I, it is not my desire. I know Mike was sort of alluding to like, maybe some of this isn't our business or our purview or whatever. And I just want to say that I, I think it's a great idea to have this sort of equity broad task force. And maybe understanding everything Brian just said was great. And I think like every, understanding the base issues of like the student behavior. I haven't heard anyone talk about that. So I just, yeah, it'd be, I look forward to hearing more about the development of this equity group, whatever form it takes.
Thank you. And I think, I think Brian's reference to the student council, our student council at the high school has over the years been very active and take a really important role in being role models, for lack of a better word, I think for students in general to see how students can have a voice and affect change and in fact be the leaders of change. And I think that we need to keep in mind and promote because that has been something that we have seen our student leaders do really well. Joanna?
Thank you. So in higher ed, we also often train ourselves as administrators or as a committee in these topics, especially equity right now, but we also do similarly empower the students to be the ones that are leading and bringing in their parents and peers. And I think that's great. So I'm really glad that's where we're going with things. And I think I hear that we're also going to stay aware and in tune with these things as well. But I do think on the ground level, it's great that the students could, could potentially be the individuals driving these conversations, because you're right, they're in, they're in those seats. They're dealing with these topics and they often know the right questions to ask if we let them, if we give them the ear to listen, we let them be heard. So I'm excited to move forward with this and I really would love to know where this goes. Again, like I said, I'm involved with initiatives like this in higher ed. So I'm, I'm really happy to see it happening at this level as well.
To give you an example of how teachers are able to cultivate that leadership with students, one of the, you know, I haven't seen the outright proposal, but at the end of the year, one of my colleagues at the high school shared some ideas that were generated by students for curriculum. And one of the courses that students, this group of students was most championing was a course in human and civil rights. And I thought that that was outstanding, that that was generated by kids. So you can see that that, that leadership really is there and we simply need to tap into it and allow for its voice to be heard. And I believe that that's out there in the community and that we would have students who would be willing to help educate folks in the community and maybe the best people trained to facilitate dialogue between adults who aren't trained. They're very difficult conversations and our kids are going to be educated. So I think it's real, a really important thing that we can do for this community to bring the community, to continue to bring the community together and stay together. And I think our students are probably the greatest resources that we have.
Thank you. And actually, that reminded me of something pre-COVID. These things keep reoccurring to me. The school committee has in the past scheduled at least every other month or so a meeting at the high school with student representatives, whether it's us, class officers at some points, it's been student council members at other points. We also have had meetings where we just invited any student to come in and talk to us about anything they want to and they could just drop in. We haven't been able to do those during COVID. I'm really hoping we can, because again, the students are, are so good at perceiving what's happening, communicating it so clearly to us. And I think those contacts were really helpful, having those meetings. They could really give us a snapshot of things very quickly and easily. And, and they're very good at that. And I would, I would like to be able to begin doing those meetings again to give students an opportunity to communicate with the school committee.
And they hardly use any acronyms.
Oh, they're great. They're great. And they're just like, just, they can answer the questions so directly. It's so eye-opening and always just so impressive at how amazing they are. I'm sorry. I know that's an overused word, but you know, our students are really so capable and, and I'd like any opportunity to appreciate that. So we definitely will not forget to continue this work on all fronts. Thank you.
We lost you for a moment, Jane.
I think she might still be talking unaware too. I'm sorry, Jane. We lost you at the start of that. You just came back.
Great. It is Tuesday, so my computer has to be a little strange. The next item is update and possible vote on fall COVID safety guidance, including possible policy EBCFA, which is included in our packet. And this is this year's updated version. Am I correct, Brian?
Yeah, I think altogether last year's plans were probably around 130 pages long if we took all of the school-related or school-specific items in there. And I do want to say at, at the outset of this, will be a much more, much abbreviated presentation from last year. And I'm going to ask Melissa Bednarski to join me for part of this, because it's, it's, it's quite a bit different in terms of, in particular of testing and quarantine requirements are very different than they were last year, because obviously now we're mixing in vaccinated individuals. And there's new research on that, which just came out late last week. Melissa and I had to review that over the course of Friday and Monday, which is why we really couldn't get this to the committee any sooner. So we're going to have to do a verbal summary. Just as a reminder, last year in August, the school committee had given basically the superintendent, the authority to make, to create the plans. I'm not asking for the school committee to take it back or, or turn something into policy, but you do always have that right, which is why we threw in possible vote. But, you know, I didn't want masking to become a policy of the school committee in case it's no longer necessary. We'd be stuck masking for two weeks while the kid, you know, while the, all the other schools have made the change. And that was great that, that we were able to take that out of policy last year and put it into expectation. So first, the focus of this year really is highlighted in these very brief contents of what is really a 10-page document as opposed to 130-something page document. Yes, there will be a few more pages that would come out at each school level, but we wanted it to be a little bit more user-friendly. In addition to the fact that some of the things that we did last year, for example, sanitizing and cleaning have become practices that we're going to keep in place anyway. So it didn't need to go into a plan as part of, as part of COVID-related stuff. We're just going to be cleaner in our buildings in general. So the basis of our approach to effectively reduce or eliminate the possibility of transmission of COVID-19 in our schools is masking indoors and on buses, hand hygiene, even though the state doesn't have any distancing requirements. We've added our own distancing requirements and of course ventilation, you know, and I'll go through that very briefly. And then I'm going to ask Melissa to go through, just give a little bit of a summary of the difference in the protocols for quarantining, talk about test and stay and testing. So first, just a reminder for the community that there's no remote learning in 21 and 22, and that's statewide. The commissioner will not allow for remote learning this current school year. We're keeping the daily self-checks. Staff is not required to sign in, but they are still required to do a daily self-check. Staff is not required to sign in, but they are still required to do a daily self-check. We just wanted to get the sign-in off their plate. Service providers who are meeting with students in different areas or moving from room to room or building to building will still need to keep a log for the purpose of contact tracing. And again, all visitors will need to sign in. Included the daily self-check with, uh, the symptoms are slightly different. You know, we did joke at one point that Melissa had noticed that, for example, nausea, vomiting or diarrhea. It said, when combined with other symptoms. And Melissa noticed that, no, if we have a kid who has vomiting or diarrhea, we don't want them coming in regardless of whether they have other symptoms. So we just took the with other symptoms off. So we haven't, we, what we're doing is actually a little bit more stringent than what the state had put out. We changed the mask policy to a set of mask expectations that's consistent with what we approved last spring, with the exception of the fact that there's no distancing requirement for students when they're outside. School pickup and school drop-off procedures are going to be the same as they were last year. And on a day-to-day basis, both in the morning and in the afternoons, faculty and staff is outside to support that for students and they go through and training them on a day-to-day basis if something needs to change. Hygiene, hand washing will continue. We are able to use shared materials, but it's advised that all students, if they're sharing particular manipulatives that they might be using, we no longer need to sterilize the manipulatives, but students need to hand sanitize before they pick them up. And again, uh, in terms of ventilation, you know, Thursday, when school starts, it's going to be very humid. We now have air conditioning all over the district and we're going to have our air conditioners on. But the moment people get into the building, we'll probably try to leave the air conditioners on into the overnight. We're going to open the windows a little bit in every single classroom despite the fact that we have adequate airflow. Every day we're going to add to that airflow until the virus is gone. And we, we did that successfully last year. We do still have the air purifiers deployed and ready to roll. And so we'll still be using those. Physical distancing in classrooms will be at three feet. And again, when eating will be at least three feet. At the elementary schools, that will be with students facing in the same direction. At the secondary level, students will be seated at least three feet from each other. It's actually slightly more when they're facing in the same direction and it's, it's about six feet when they're sitting across from each other with a barrier in between. But with the exception of those days where we have inclement weather, a good, a good portion of high school and middle school students actually eat outside. So we have plenty of space in there. So now's the point where we get to the testing and quarantine protocols. And Melissa, do you want to give a little bit overview of an overview of how this is different and, and you know, what the opportunities are here for kids and families?
Sure. Hi, everyone. We're happy to be able to say that the state has fully funded the COVID testing program again through this year. So we're able to continue that in our schools. That will include testing when somebody has a symptom while in school. Or it will also include testing on our, sorry, I lost the train of my thought here. It will also include a test and stay program this year, which is new since last year. So that program is going to allow students that are identified as close contacts in our school. It's going to allow those students or staff, if they have no symptoms, they can remain in school. And what we will do is we will use our binax testing for seven days in a row. Each day when they arrive at school, they will come right to the nurse's office or wherever that nurse happens to be doing the testing. And they'll be tested, providing they stay negative, they will be able to remain in school. This is really beneficial for everyone because this will mean less time lost from in-school learning. We'll be able to keep more students in, in the classroom and, and not miss as much school. Pretty much the other testing is, is pretty much the same as last year. Of course, if they're symptomatic, there's still a quarantine requirement. Those, those guidelines are all the same. They miss positive cases will have a 10, 10 days of quarantine.
Now that, um, what used to be known as pool testing, they've changed the name to routine COVID safety checks.
Right.
And the good news is for families that last year we had to, we had to do two consents. This year there's a single consent for both testing programs. If that's right, Melissa?
That is correct. It's all in one consent, unfortunately, because the state did go with a different vendor and this is a whole different setup of this program. We had to go through the whole application process and everything again. So it is all new consent. So anybody who has consented in the past will be receiving another consent. But again, it's just the one consent. Desi and certainly our, I, I support this and I believe our district does that. We strongly recommend everyone vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals participate in the testing program. If you're not, if you're not part of that testing program and you are a close contact, you will be required to quarantine. You will have to miss school. So this is a, is a great program to ensure that students can stay in school, keeps the safety of our school. We are able to identify early, even asymptomatic individuals that may be carriers of COVID before any transmission happens in school. And we were very successful last year with zero transmissions in our school with these programs running. So this test and stay is just an additional program to add to this, to, to help with the safety of our school. I think that's about it in a nutshell. It kind of reads, um, it's a little confusing in the, on the paperwork because it goes through protocols B, you know, B1, B2, B3, because it depends on whether you're part of that test and stay program or not, where you refer to which, which protocol. But that, um, I think that I've explained it in a nutshell as best I can. So I'm happy to answer some questions if you have any.
And if I, Jane, if I could just add one more thing before we take questions also. I did send an email to families today and in the text of the email, and I will send this out frequently, in the text of the email added that all the contact information for each of the nurses at each of the schools. And we have also added a, what's basically a COVID hotline. You know, in those cases where a family gets back a positive COVID test on a Sunday and they know that their kid was hanging out with a couple of kids, we can begin contact tracing and identify those kids to come in and test on Monday morning before they go to class and potentially create other close contacts. So we do have an out-of-hours number now added to that. And I'll, I'll try to communicate those every time I send out something with COVID and make sure that families have those.
Yeah, I did want to add that, thank you for reminding me, Brian, that we were very happy with the response we had from the community and re, reporting all these cases last year. And please continue as soon as you know that your family member or yourself has been a close contact or positive, please contact the school as, as soon as you can so that we can follow our protocols.
Thanks, Melissa.
Yeah. Anyone have any questions for Melissa? It looks very thorough as always, and I think trying to make it a bit briefer is always helpful when people are reading through it. And I know for families, it can be challenging with all the paperwork. So I'm glad you reminded us that because it's a different company doing the testing, families would still have to fill out the paperwork again, even though they might have done it last year. So that, that'll be a reminder.
Yes, and, and we'll get this program up and running as soon as possible. I just heard back from the state, our assignment for a team and so forth of, and all the paperwork and testing materials and that has just arrived on how to acquire all those. So we will get the program up and running as soon as possible. It may not be day one.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? And as Brian reminded us, the policy about face coverings is included, but last year the committee decided that we would vote to allow the superintendent in consultation with the nurse and boards of health to determine that factor, correct, Brian?
Yep. So yeah, it was, it was my hope that we'd continue to be able to do that and not put volunteers in a situation where they, where you guys needed to, to manage it. Because it allows us to be able to shift more quickly as things change and that, that helps either keep our kids safe or put us in a circumstance where we're able to step down as other schools are doing and, and not have our kids be, you know, be in a situation where they can't get relief from the protocols.
Right. So even though we phrased it that way in the packet, it's, I'm not necessarily making the suggestion that we change that. That's entirely up to the group. I think it worked really well last year and it meant that things could change as they needed to and we didn't have to keep meeting and voting because sometimes there's a bit of a lag about if we would have to have a special meeting. It has to be posted at least 48 hours ahead. And to, if it's not on a regular meeting day, it can be very complicated to get that done quickly, which is sometimes necessary with this sort of thing.
And certainly we can keep it on as a standing agenda item. The review and potential vote would be the way to keep the language on there in case the committee felt the need to, to take back that authority from me.
Okay. Anyone have any thoughts on that either way? It seems as though it worked really well last year and, and I know Melissa has been really such a valuable asset. I think in terms of coordinating, consulting, you know, just being in charge of all those things. And I know she and Brian work on these things quite frequently at length. And we do, we do appreciate the work because
And that
much more informed than the rest of us in these terms, Melissa.
Yeah. And I think the extended time that she's put in, because a lot of this stuff just came out recently. And then what we, we still had to meet, Melissa had to meet with a number of regional and local health folks to run our plans by them, that I'm sure that's probably why her brain is glitching out like your Tuesday night internet chain.
I think, right, it must be a bit of over, overwork at this point, I can imagine.
Yeah, you need to get some rest, Melissa.
Yes.
And thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah. So we're leaving as such. And again, I think that's a good reminder too. Our district, through Melissa and Brian, are always consulting with the local boards of health about anything that comes up, as well as the state, CDC, anything that comes up in terms of issues connected to COVID. Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, discussion about school committee goals. We've had those for some time. We've been looking at them. People have been suggesting modifications, additions, changes. Does anyone have anything this evening that they have worded in any particular way that they'd like us to consider at this point? I knew we'd be spending a lot of time this evening on the new, on the COVID regulations, on the handbooks, but I think we will have to get back to the goals and be much more specific in terms of giving ourselves homework at some point to come back with suggestions, either of keeping the parts that people like or making modifications where they so choose. So that will continue to be on the agenda and at least by the end of the calendar year, we should have formulated specifically our goals for the next several years. Jennifer?
Um, how would you like that to go? Are you gonna keep it on the agenda every week? Or do you want to pick a day that we review things by and present additions? Or I, I'm just curious, like what structure would you enjoy for this process to take?
I think that's an excellent question. I wanted to ask the committee what they were thinking about that. I mean, we have discussed it briefly, a bit here and a bit there. But I think you're right, we're going to need to set some deadlines perhaps. Not that I like that word, but sometimes that's how things happen. So any suggestions? Brian?
If it's helpful, then it is my intent at the next school committee meeting to, you know, as I mentioned, at our administrative retreat, we decided on five strategic goals for the district from, from the administrative team. And it's our intent on an aggressive timeline for September 13th to have more than just the goals, but the district action plan, because the schools will then need to build their annual plan. Our teachers will need to decide on their student learning and professional practice goals and those have to be aligned with the district and the building goals. So if that would be helpful, because we're going to have that, it is my intent to have that available for approval from the committee for the September 13th meeting. So maybe putting those agenda items side by side. And if you'd like, I can talk a little bit about, basically the, the process that we used was to start our research in the context of the pandemic. And what was it that, those who knew more than us, we're, we're looking at in terms of future planning and we decided to use the acceleration roadmap. And it, you know, while we all can be critical of the Department of Education, I do have to say that the acceleration roadmap might be the best thing that they've ever put out. It is a very, very user-friendly and useful document to, for schools to begin their thinking about what's a very challenging set of circumstances. And it might be helpful. If I were to share that again, I, I think I shared it in the previous superintendent's report. There's a link there. But if you were to start it at our research foundation, that might be helpful for the committee to have an understanding of, of what Desi is looking for us to do.
Okay. Yes, I think that would be helpful. If that information could come at the next meeting, as you've said, because that will be our first meeting in September, correct? Yes. And at that point, I think we should then set some specific deadlines by which we should be formulating our own goals. And anyone have any different suggestions? I welcome them. And also if people have noticed things, I think a couple of times when we've talked about it, it would be great if you noticed something that you felt could be worded better or additionally certainly just write it up and bring it forward. I think any of those suggestions would be useful. Okay, in that case, we will put that on the next agenda and then get more specific at that time about what our timeline should look like in terms of getting it settled. Okay. Discussion of in-person, remote school committee meetings. I don't think I have gotten any new information. I know Tina's been working on the setup in the school committee room. I believe most of the equipment is there. I think it's a matter of figuring out the logistics of how to include an audience successfully, whether it's remotely or in person. Given the fact that we would still need to be wearing masks again, being in the school, I think the first
Jane, I don't know if you can hear me, but I think we lost you. You might be back.
Yes, I am. My connection was, it's, my computer's saying, you've been doing this too long, speed it up. I think we would have to look at the issue now once we have to wear masks when we're back in that room. I think it would make it harder for an audience to hear us because in the past with the microphones we had, it was hard for them to hear us even without masks. I'm hoping the new microphones are better. I think we'll have to do some testing to see if we're getting closer to being able to do that. Anything you might like to add, Tina?
No, um, I think that works out.
Okay. I, I mean, I know Tina and her staff is working on it. There's a couple of issues with the size of the room, with the ability to project to an audience at home or in place. But we'll still keep working on it. And in the meantime, we will keep meeting this way and invite anyone who's interested to join our Zoom. anyone who's interested to join our Zoom audience. Thank you. Um, selection of and vote for school committee delegate to the MASC conference, which is Mass Association of School Committees Conference in November. I know three of us have signed up for the conference, Cassie, Jennifer, and myself. Um, the, um, there is a delegate assembly that votes on a variety of issues that are brought before school committees ahead of time. We will be getting those resolutions, they're called. Um, I'm not sure when they're sending them out this year, but we will consider those resolutions and vote on our position on them before the conference. And we need to, if we can, have one of our members who is going to be in attendance as a delegate to the voting assembly. They're also going to hold the actual conference and the delegate assembly remotely. So it doesn't have to be someone actually there in person. And I know last year, Cassie was good enough to be our delegate. It was all remote last year. The, um, it's a very interesting process. Um, working on the resolutions is, um, it takes quite a while this year. It's going to be held on Saturday morning.
It was the best Saturday of all last year I had.
Yeah. You got to actually do something different, didn't you, from your house? Um, it, it's, I'm not too sure why they've done it this year on Saturday again, since people can be there in person as well. Um, it used to be on Friday afternoon, then they changed it to Wednesday afternoon. I think Saturday's more problematic because in terms of most of the workshops, in my experience, most of the workshops take place Wednesday afternoon through Friday. And a lot of people, having spent that much time there, are not really in the mood to, um, stay an additional half day. But, um, that said, I don't expect to be there Saturday morning. I expect to be, um, on my way home by then. So, um, we don't have to have a delegate, but if, uh, someone would like to try that, they're certainly welcome to. And, um, I believe they've extended the deadline to choose the delegate, um, much longer than they have other years. I mean, we can still, uh, not announce our delegate into October, which is very unusual. It usually has to be done quicker. Cassie?
I'm just thinking, um, Jennifer and Joanna May might not under, like, might not know what we mean by resolutions and what that process looks like. So I wonder if it would be helpful to just explain it a little bit. Or maybe they do. I don't want to speak for you two. I'm just thinking. I know Jennifer is volunteering to go, but she might not know what that process looks like if she were interested in doing that or whatnot, so.
Right. The, um, MASC leadership, um, takes suggestions from any school committees or school committee members about, um, I don't know exactly what word to use, about any ideas of things they might like the legislature to consider modifying, changing, or instituting in terms of education. And they're phrased as resolutions, and then the membership votes positively or negatively to send it forward. Um, I can't say we've had a great track record of changing things that way, but it does give the association and the school committees across the state a chance to weigh in.
I'm trying to think of an example of a resolution last year that we had. Um, some of them don't seem to pertain to us at all, especially as a regional district.
Right. I think there was a resolution last year, perhaps about, um, not doing statewide testing.
Yes, there was. Yep. And nothing changed.
Right, right. It was another one of those. So that's a good idea, but don't get no. Um, Jennifer, did you have a question?
Does the person who is the delegate have to be a person who is there, or could it be a remote attendant? Or I guess, is, is everyone that's going already signed up to go? In other words, is it, are the choices Jane, me, um, or Cassie?
So far, um, people can still sign up to go to the conference if they would like to. Uh, we brought the topic up because it's a little less expensive if people sign up early, but it doesn't mean can't sign up later, because sometimes people don't know their plans, especially these times. Um, so certainly other people are welcome to sign up, and I don't think, uh, I don't think the conference itself is necessarily full yet. So that is
Is the process, I'm sorry, the price the same for a remote? Because you said there was an option to be a remote attendant, right?
Right. And I was surprised because there was not a difference in price. And for the conference itself. And to me, that seemed a little surprising. Um. I, yes, it, it was the same price, uh, regardless of whether you attended or didn't. So that was, but that is something that's still available.
No, I would want to, um, just look that, into that more and understand, uh, sort of to Cassie's point, like what all is involved. And so I will do that and get back to you guys.
Thank you. I, and I think it's something that, you know, you might want to look into before you committed to it. So, thanks. And if anyone else does want to attend the conference virtually, as well as in person, they're welcome to, um, check in. Sabrina's, uh, in the superintendent's office is the one who registers people for us. Okay, thanks, Jennifer. Uh, the next item is discussion of subcommittee membership. Um, we pretty much populated the subcommittees a couple of meetings ago. It has, however, occurred to me that, um, it might be helpful if someone wanted to join the Unit C negotiating team. Unit C is paraprofessionals and administrative assistants. Um. We generally have three members. Um, I actually, um, have put myself on all of the committees, and it occurred to me if someone else would like to replace me on Unit C, that would be very helpful. Um, Cassie, did you have your hand up or something?
Um, cafeteria and custodial is going to be down a member as well now. As a reminder.
Yes, but if we, um, we are still in negotiation with them. We could add another member if, if someone would like to join, but we do have two members, which I believe is enough of a quorum to continue if someone does not choose to join those groups. Uh, those negotiations are currently in process. Unit A and Unit C have not begun, but will begun, begin shortly, um, because um, cafeteria and custodial are in the process. Once they have reached a resolution, um, we may not need to start negotiating with them again for a couple of years. Often, uh, often contracts have been arranged for three years. That's not always true, but it, it is often true.
Who is on Unit C currently, other than myself?
Oh.
Jennifer.
Jennifer, yes. Jennifer is, um, I do have the list here. And um. Yes. I know the other negotiating subcommittee is, um, the GIC subcommittee, and that one generally doesn't occur until spring. And I believe that's a, um, often a shorter timeline than some of the others. If someone was thinking they might want to also take part in Unit C as well as something like the GIC, that would certainly be doable. It wouldn't be at the same time, I don't expect. Again, just something to think about. Mike?
Sorry, the mute button got moved, um, uh, when I changed my view. Anyway, I, I could jump onto the Unit C if you needed somebody. Is that, I mean, there's some, not a lot to do for Unit A yet, and if that's going to wrap up, it may well wrap up before anything happens with you today.
Um, I, I appreciate that. Unit A and C may be going on at the same time, which is sometimes true, but that, you'd still find that doable.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, and yes, and if anyone decides they would like to join the custodial or maintenance, we certainly can accept another member. I don't think it's crucial at this point, but it's always open. Um, the next item is uh, one that we had to add within the last 48 hours, which we did appropriately. Uh, there is an open Montague School Committee representative seat. Um, unfortunately, we received a resignation from Carly Nedz Delugas, remember, um, because she is moving out of town. And unfortunately, if you live in another town, we can't have you on our school committee. And so we'll miss her, but that was, um, unavoidable. So I will be, um, notifying the two newspapers again that, um, anyone interested in filling the open Montague School Committee representative seat should send a letter of interest to, um, the superintendent's office, which is 35 Cropper Avenue in Turner's Falls, by Monday, September 13th. So that, um, the school committee can appoint someone at the September 14th full school committee meeting. So we'll publicize that and let people know that's available, and we will miss Carly. Um, hopefully someone else would like to join us. Okay, I think we have covered quite a lot, actually, this evening. Um, there are no minutes to approve. If there are any agenda requests, please let Cassie, Brian, or myself know. Mike?
Sorry, not exactly an agenda request, and this may be coming out of bad habit, but I'm wondering if, if you, Jane, and Jennifer would be available for a, a Unit A subcommittee meeting prior to the next school committee meeting? Okay.
I, that would work.
I'll talk about all other arrangements somewhere else, so we don't waste more of the, the whole committee's time. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. And as ideas come up for the agenda, please let us know. A lot of these, we will continue to discuss, because that's the nature of a lot of the items that we have. Um, we generally meet the Tuesday evening before the next school committee meeting the week before. So, um, that would be September 7th, probably. We'll have our next agenda setting.
Thanksgiving's right around the corner.
Oh, I just can't begin to think how the days are flying. Uh, dates of the next scheduled meetings, two regular meetings, one September 14th, one September 28th. At this point, we will still meet virtually. The open meeting will begin at 6:30 for both of those, and I think that's pretty much it for this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Ooh.
Seconded.
And Joanna, I believe. And once again, we need to take a roll call vote to do anything. So. Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you all.
You're frozen again. Bye, Jane.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
You're, you're, you're muted, Cassie.